Okay. Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Our apologies for being a few minutes late. We've had council meetings since 2:00 this afternoon, nonstop, so we're moving straight into this. We should have this meeting over by about 7:15, 7:20, I suspect.[20.02][20.02](Laughter). We're just talking to one of the members of the media about last year. Remember, last year, this meeting went on until 12:05, my birthday.[32.04][32.04](Laughter). My birthday's on Wednesday this year, so it better not go on until my birthday.[38.11][38.11](Laughter). Okay. Good evening. My name's Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor, and I want to welcome you all, on behalf of City Council, to this evening, its public hearing, into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and directed that we have a public hearing. Staff from the city's planning and development will first present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and once that summary is finished, the floor will be opened to those who have something to say on the subject, want to share their views with us. Any of those pre-registered will go first, and then, once we go through the pre-registered list, we'll open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak. We stress to you all that this is a public hearing, an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. All of us are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But council has asked me to set the tone, set the rules. It's not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or with those in the audience who might be opposed to your point of view. So we ask that each speaker restrict their comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. If you've got some good stuff, you can speak more than once. We have to get back to the back of the line, and we'll let you speak as often as you need to, to get your point across. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. That's, please, no clapping, no booing, no cheering, no jeering of any of the presentations made tonight. As Chair of the meeting, I've been asked to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive or becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. Under the rules, we can't receive any more information after the public hearing on an item is adjourned until after we've voted on the item, either voted to give it forth reading or voted to reject it. So if you have something that you want us to consider, if you want to hand in something that you'd like to be part of the permanent record, a letter, or anything like that, you must hand it in to Ms. Lawre, the deputy city clerk, prior to the adjournment of the item. After the item, we cannot receive any more information, written or verbal, until after we've voted on it. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll have a regular council meeting. It'll convene in order that council can give consideration, not only to the items on the public hearing agenda, that's items 10 through 13 in the council agenda, but also a whole bunch of other stuff that's on the council agenda, and we'd encourage any of you who don't have anything else to do, you could stay tonight and watch council in action through a whole bunch of important issues. If during the public hearing, any council member, or for that matter, during the debate that follows the public hearing, any council member wants to take more time to consider an item, the item can be put off until another meeting. It doesn't have to be voted on tonight. I will now call on Ms. Lawre to introduce the first bylaw on tonight's agenda, and the planning and development staff to make a presentation on that item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item 1 is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 801 Henderson Avenue from RT12 Family Residential to CS1 Service Commercial, bylaw number 4420 2013.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This site is located on the northeast corner of Henderson Avenue and Bernachi Street. The site is designated Service Commercial in the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site into the east, west, and south is RT12 Family Residential. Zoning to the north is SS3 Service Station Repair. The site currently has a single-family dwelling. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site in conformance with the official community plan designation to CS1 Service Commercial to facilitate development of a car wash facility in conjunction with the existing service station located to the north of the site at 750 Low Heat Highway. Staff are recommending second and third readings to rezoning by law number 4420.
Okay, one quick question. On the Service Commercial designation, do you know when that designation reaches back to? It's designated in our OCP, according to Attachment 3, as Service Commercial, as is that whole block.
It was designated, at least, back to the 1990 plan. It may even predate that earlier in terms of the land use designation. The RT1 zoning goes back even further. Not to confuse the issue.
Lose claiming credit for it.
Oh, okay.
So it goes way back. It goes way back.
Way back. There's your answer.
Okay. That's the answer. Okay. We have a speaker's list here for 801 Henderson. Begin with the applicant, Jim Allen, Allen Concepts Limited. Mr. Allen is at 3955 St. Paul's Avenue, North Vancouver. You're up.
Do you want your slides up, or your video first?
Yeah, the slide first. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members. I thank you for the opportunity to present this project, and I'm positive that it won't last until Mayor Stewart's birthday on Wednesday. My name is Jim Allen, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Gill, who own the property at 801 Henderson, and wish to rezone it, as you have heard, from two-family residential, RT1, to service commercial for the purposes of a car wash. You may well recall that we made an application in April of 2011. I made a presentation here, and so we weren't successful. And you might ask, so what's changed since that previous application? Since then, the Millardville neighborhood planning process has been ongoing, and we've made a submission in that process and been to a number of open houses. And the conclusion has been, by planning, that the area bounded by Low Heat Highway, Bernachi, and Burnett would remain, or should remain, in the OCP as Service Commercial designation. So we feel like we're not only following the current designation, but that is being reconfirmed as, moving forward, as an appropriate use. Secondly, we were instructed by Mr. Stewart, Mayor Stewart, to hold an open house or a public meeting, which we did on January 10th of this year.
I'll clarify, I don't instruct applicants. Pardon, may have given you advice, but I don't instruct applicants. I apologize.
Advice. And so we held that meeting in January of this year and invited the neighbors, hand-delivered 75 invitations, and advertised it. So I have up on the board there the area map, and it just shows the contents and the properties that surround this triangle of land, which are currently operating in a commercial mode. There's another service station in addition to the Husky station that Mr. Gill owns with his brother. So the area is, as I say, designated as Service Commercial in the OCP. We had, now, could I have this? How do I get to the next slide, or the open house slide? Sorry. Well, maybe I do. Yeah. I don't know that you need to read this whole slide, but the substance of it is that we had an open house at the motel on the corner of Bernachi and Burnett, because it was within walking distance of all of the neighbors. We advertised it, as I mentioned, by putting up a sign on the property and advertising in the newspaper and handing out invitations. We held that session from 6:30 till 9:00 p.m. in the evening, so as to give people lots of time after dinner to attend. About 25 people came to this session that I was staging and were sitting in attendance. Seventeen signed in on the sign-in sheet that was at the desk as they walked in, and 15 people provided comments on the comment sheet. And of those 15 who provided comments, nine were in favor and six were opposed. We presented the project, we presented a video, which you will see, and received comments. There were some positive, and there were some that were negative. Some people thought that there was too much traffic in the neighborhood, the site was too steep to be safe, some thought it was going to be too loud, some felt it needed more landscaping, and we can address those. Some thought there were too many washes in the area, some thought it wasn't going to be a profitable business, and there was a recommendation to build a duplex. So there was a range of suggestions. If I could have, I can do that. So this is a slide of the site plan of the facility. It consists of two buildings, one an enclosed automatic car wash building, another one a series of coin bays with the equipment room enclosed. The only access to the car wash will be from one-way traffic off of Low Heat, through the Husky site, and through to the car wash, exiting, only exiting onto Henderson, not entering from Henderson. And we've planned it for, not for the exclusive use of the Husky gas station customers, but certainly they are the target audience, people who get fuel, want to move on, get a wash at a discount with their fuel purchase, and then head on their way. We've included fencing for noise reduction and to cut down headlight glare. We've given the buildings a residential appearance, and we have added, have a bunch of landscaping. This is a sort of sketch of the residential appearance, pitched roof, stucco, stone base, and some windows. And then we have a landscaping plan, some on, some off the property. That was a recommendation by engineering for street trees and boulevard and a divided The vacuum cleaners, somebody mentioned the vacuum cleaners at one time, and vacuum cleaners all are on the Husky gas station site. They're not on the car wash portion of the site, so if you vacuum first and then move on to the wash. In terms of traffic and traffic concerns, we had a study done by Bunton Associates for traffic circulation and also for the grading of the site, and so the comment that the site was too steep to be safe is addressed in that study, and it's not the case. So when you exit this site, you were proposing a right-hand turn lane only sign at the exit, and cars would come out on Henderson, turn right, and then turn right or left on Bernachi Street to circulate. So there's about 12 meters of Henderson Avenue that will be affected by exiting vehicles from the wash. Concern was raised about hours of operation. In the previous submission, we had offered to reduce the hours of operation from what we had originally proposed to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The Husky station hours are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., so the wash would not operate as many hours as the car wash does now. And Mr. Gill is prepared to reduce that further in the evening during the winter, when car washing is reduced to 9:30 p.m. There was a concern that this would be a traffic area at night after the station was closed, so we've added gates that can be locked when the station is closed to prevent people from running in there and loitering, driving in there, and when the station is closed or the wash is closed, and carrying on. So there'd be a gate at Henderson Avenue, a swing steel gate, and a chain gate at the service station entrance to keep people from being able to cut through that way or to loiter on the site in vehicles and make a noise. The big concern was the noise of the car wash, particularly the automatic car wash, and there is the feeling that it will sound like a jet engine. We have proposed that this wash only operates when the doors are closed, so the entrance door opens, the vehicle that's to be washed moves in, the entrance door closes, the exit door is closed, the car is washed and dried, and only when the equipment stops and the noise stops inside the building do the doors open and allow the car to leave. We hired an acoustical engineering firm, and they've done an analysis of an existing wash and overlaying these results on this neighborhood, and the noise reaching the closest house would be no louder than the ambient noise now of the traffic on Bernachi. So we don't think that it represents an increase in the noise. We can understand the concern, given other washes, but this one is planned to be quiet. So I have a video. I don't know if it's on this. That's something else.
Would you like the video now?
Yeah, let's do the video now. Last time I was here, it stopped halfway through, so we'll hope that it's, so this is to demonstrate how. 2001, Husky rebuilt their gas station in Whistler, B.C., and added an automatic car wash with an onboard dryer. Because of the close proximity of townhouses to the north of the site and residential across the side street on which the wash exits, they programmed the overhead doors to remain closed during the entire wash and dry cycle. I have filmed this event, but it was so quiet that I reprogrammed the doors so that they would open partway through the cycle, and then, in the second case, close again, so you can hear the difference between the operation with the doors open and shut. During the filming, you will also hear some traffic noise from the adjacent Cedar Sky Highway, in addition to a little bit of noise from the car wash itself. The second vehicle is now being washed and dried with the door closed, but I programmed it to open, so you can hear the difference, the doors open versus closed.[1061.13][1061.13](MUSIC) This, that's fine. There's one more slide. It's the wash at the Low Heat Highway. Okay, so, find it. This is a wash at 641 Low Heat Highway, and I was asked about this wash. I actually was involved in redesigning its renovation and got a development permit and a building permit for it. It's a seven-bay coin op car wash, and it has two automatic bays as well, and they operate with the doors front and back open when the wash is running. It's surrounded by townhouses. Its setting is certainly a little different, and I'm not suggesting that it's identical, but as far as I know, they haven't had noise complaints from this operation. It's set back from Low Heat, but it is pretty close to the townhouses that you can see in the bottom picture. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration. I have one question. You mentioned that if there are documents that would be helpful. I was assuming that the consultant's report would be at your disposal. It was submitted with the application to the planning department, and I don't know whether I need to now resubmit a copy of that, or how that works.
If the city has it, we have it.
If the city has it, you have it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. So if there's any questions?
Okay. I don't see any questions. Thank you very much. There may be some as the evening progresses, but we'll, thank you, go to the next speaker. Beverly Cook. Beverly Cook. Beverly? Nope. Okay. That was the end of our speaker's list, so are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Harry Parmar. I represent 803-805 Henderson, which is directly east of this property. First of all, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll keep this short, not take up too much of your guys' time. The reason I'm here is my biggest concern with this development is I understand the designation's been there for, you know, 20-plus years, however long it's been there. By the time that I've owned this property, both the last seven or eight years, I've yet to see anything go up in that area that is commercial. Everything I've seen is new duplexes, new homes go up, which is all residential-based. So my concern is that bringing in one commercial property into this area is going to really affect the property value, which I feel that the rest of the community shouldn't really have to kind of go through. So I've spent the last year or so trying to sell my property, because I understand this is going to be going on, and the common concern I always get is that putting a car wash in next door is going to affect the overall area for property value. So that's my biggest concern. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, if cities put any thought into that aspect of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right at this desk here. If anyone else has stuff to be passed out, you just hand it to the clerk, and it'll get passed to us.
I don't really want to come back here again. I was here a couple of years ago, and I was kind of hoping that.
Yep. You were here a couple of days ago, too.
That too. My name's Tony Klassen, I live at 727 Henderson Avenue.
Tony Klassen.
From my living room window, bedroom window, I can look down, and I'll be looking right into a car wash. Couple of years ago, after it got voted down last time, went into zoning, and they opened the zoning for Millardville, and Mike and Russ in your department there were saying, "We'll fix it. This'll go away. We'll just change the zoning. Everything will be fine." And they just kind of really botched the job there. Up in the top-left corner, it says Low Heat Neighborhood. That's actually, the Realtors call that Coquitlam West. He's trying to drag that into Millardville, and that's just, all the people down Henderson that I talked to don't want that move. At the bottom corner, he's pulling SC1 out of there, and that's not the problem area. Over to the right, the problem area, he's just leaving the SC1, and like, we're back here again. And then we told the car wash guy, like, if he puts the wash behind the gas station, nobody's going to care, except for maybe the guy that owns that fourplex. He might have a problem with it, but everybody else in the neighborhood probably wouldn't. And then the property values. Moving us out of that Low Heat Neighborhood into Millardville, we're taking a hit on property values. It's just not acceptable. And it's not acceptable to sit there and put this car wash in, and now I'm taking a hit on my property values. So I basically need to get my money out of Coquitlam, so I need to sell my house. I need some time here between this happening and that happening, and basically, houses aren't selling right now, so. The little video up there, where he's playing that noise, that sounded like awfully noisy to me, to have that thing running, like, from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, just like, no way.[1433.42][1433.42](MUSIC) A lot of the neighbors feel they're being bullied by Husky Oil, and I think that Allen guy's a lawyer, but I'm not sure, but we all think he's a lawyer. So it's like just big oil, big money coming in and just trying to push the neighbors As for traffic, it's not going to get rooted down and go up Bernachi towards Low Heat, because that's going to be plugged up. Someone's going to turn around and straight up Henderson, and then cut onto Low Heat and beat all the traffic, because that's what I'd be doing if I was at the car wash. We walked around all the neighbors. We did a petition. I talked to like 30 property owners in there, and not one of them said they wanted that car wash there. They're all, everyone, 100% opposed. The acoustic engineer that they hired, that's a joke, because I could hire an engineer, and he would have the exact opposite results. What else? This is somebody else's list that they handed me. They were a little too shy to come up here and talk. See, the car wash, they had like six months of repair. We had like a week. Too many car washes, I've heard that already. How many more times do we have to go through this application process? This is the second time here now. They're worried about kids in the neighborhood, traffic getting backed on, property values that go down, I've heard that already. And the zoning came back up again. That's about it. That's my list.
You keep mentioning Millardville. Your resistance is to be in Millardville?
Oh, yeah. I paid, like, when I bought that house 20 years ago, I took the Realtor out, and I said I didn't want to be living in Millardville. So he pulls out the map, showed me that house on Henderson, and said, "No, we're not in Millardville. We're actually in this other neighborhood." He called it Coquitlam West. You guys call it the Low Heat Neighborhood. And it's like location, location, location. Nobody advertises their house as being almost in Millardville. It's always almost in Coquitlam West, almost in central Coquitlam, almost in Cape Horn.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Please come forward.
Clement Swibb, 214 Jackson. I'd just like to make one short point. That area is under study by your own municipality right now, and you would be jumping the gun to jump in front of your own study.
Are there any other speakers to this item? We're going to, anyone who hasn't spoken yet, we'll do that first. Please step forward.
Trenton Hart, 704 Henderson. I'd just like to say that the plan that I see there at this point in time looks pretty good. They put a high enough wall up to help with the noise reduction, and the trees and whatnot help to reduce noise as well. The people there are good people, and there will be opportunities for employment for people in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? No.
Hi there. Patrick McNeil, 225 Hart Street. I'm at the corner of Hart and Henderson. Like the other gentleman was saying earlier, I bought my house in a residential area, so if that is rezoned to commercial service, what's from, yeah, keeping that whole triangle we're talking about being rezoned, right? Like, I'm on the same page with everyone else. I know for a fact that, like he's saying, down Henderson towards Hart there, I live right at the corner, and the traffic through the neighborhood is terrible. Like I said, I do live on the corner, so I'm very familiar with the foot traffic, walking over to Skytrain, as well as the cars cutting through, getting over to Low Heat Highway, or, sorry, Burnett and to Low Heat Highway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward.
My biggest concern is that, well, I've got children, and we use a crosswalk right at Henderson and Bernachi. You have cars turning onto Bernachi Street, right at that crosswalk already. It is terrible to cross at that street. You can't really cross at Low Heat, because there's cars all there, and you can't really cross at Burnett, so the safest place is to cross Bernachi at Henderson. And if you've got increased traffic there, I think that's really a safety concern. Thank you.
Actually, on that point, I wonder if, is there any discussion about relocating the crosswalk or managing that in some way?
Your worship, traffic analysis was conducted. There was no significant issue. There's going to be upgrades to the whole frontage of Bernachi, including separate sidewalk, new curb and gutter, and I understand the crosswalk will remain in place at that location.
Yep. We may want, speaking to engineering at this point, we may want to consider a bulge or... Speaking of engineering at this point, we may want to consider a bulge or something as a means of managing... We do get high speeds down Bernachi, coming off Low Heat and not slowing down. That wouldn't be the fault of the property owners in the neighborhood. It would be the fault of the drivers, but nonetheless, that's a risk that I think exists there. I've got Counselor Hodge and Counselor Reed. Counselor Hodge?
You just asked the question. I was thinking the same thing about that crosswalk and if it's possible. You said there was no plan to move it, but it's not a controlled crosswalk. It is, it would be physically possible to move it if we had to at a later date, though. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do think it almost fits better on the north side than the south.
Did I make one more point?
No, you can't, actually. No, you can't.
Did I finish?
Not yet, not yet. But Counselor Reed, and then we're going to allow any other speakers, and anyone who wants to speak a second time will come after everyone's spoken the first time. Okay, Counselor Reed.
Yes, to Mr. McIntyre. Do you have a copy of the proposed plan for that particular designation right there from Low Heat down to Bernachi, a little triangle there?
Designation, you mean, in OCP?
Designation.
If I could, your worship, I think there's a couple of things happening here. There's been some comments about being within which neighborhood, you know, Coquitlam West or Low Heat.
If I may, Mr. McIntyre, Coquitlam West is just a real estate board designation for what area you're driving through. It has no correlation to what we do at City Hall whatsoever.
I think the confusion might be arising from that is, under the current Millardville neighborhood plan, and that was the OCP map that was just shown a moment ago, the boundary actually does go down along Bernachi, then along Henderson, over to the block of Foster. And so currently, the neighborhood is a little smaller than what's being proposed under the new, updated Millardville neighborhood plan. So the Millardville neighborhood plan boundaries have been proposed to be expanded slightly to the west, a fair bit to the north, and also to the east. So there may be some confusion with amongst residents, and they weren't aware of that, those boundary changes that have been proposed. The land use designations have stayed the same in the area to the east of Bernachi. It's the area to the west of Bernachi as shown on the plan here on the screen. Under the proposed updated Millardville neighborhood plan, it's that sort of tanny area. That's neighborhood attached residential is proposed for those lands to the west of Bernachi, which coincidentally, before Henderson was sort of the dividing line. Under the existing in-place Millardville neighborhood plan, that area to the west of Bernachi, south of Henderson, is actually service commercial. So that's the change that's being proposed there. All that area to the west of Bernachi would be neighborhood attached residential.
So the one where the little red square is denoting the property in that little triangle that, with the cross lines, that's all service commercial?
Under...
Bernachi, Low Heat, Brunette.
That's correct. Under both the existing Millardville neighborhood plan and what's proposed in the updated draft, it's service commercial.
Just checking. Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, your worship. But just to be absolutely clear, the map that we're looking at right at the moment is the proposed Millardville neighborhood plan, which is out for public consultation before it comes back in whatever finally revised form for adoption by council. So it's conceivable that by the time it comes back to us, it will no longer be crosshatched, or there may be some further change to that. What's presently a Bernachi boundary might move a little bit to the east, might move, you know, who knows? Because the whole idea is it's out for public consultation. Thank you.
Yes. I think Counselor Reed was only making the point that Attachment 3 accurately reflects, Attachment 3 accurately reflects the current designation. The overhead right now is reflecting the proposed designation.
That's right.
But in both cases, this property was service commercial.
I was trying to establish, thank you, Mr. Mayor, because it's what it's been all along. It's not changing a miss whatsoever.
Yep. Okay. Nobody else? Any other speakers? Please step forward.
My name is Giuseppe Manderino. I live at 215 Bernachi Street. I support this project since 2011. I'm still supporting today.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? You can come forward now, sir.
Just one quick point. Two children have died at that corner, Bernachi and Low Heat, people coming around the corner. So when you start thinking about moving the crosswalk, look back in history. I've lived there 43 years in the area. Kenny Hutella's sister was one. I don't know the name of the other. But if you start planning with crosswalks in that area, they come around the corner off the Low Heat onto Bernachi at a tremendous rate of speed. So how you place that crosswalk is very important.
Absolutely. We were actually, there was some discussion about potentially shortening the crosswalk by bulging the curves out, as we've done in other communities, as a traffic management or speed management thing. When I went to elementary school about two blocks away, and one of our students was killed in that crossing Bernachi, and that was more than 20 years ago.
A long time.
Oh, stop. It was about 45 years ago, and that was that reality. So, thank you. Any other... Please.
I realize that this was not to be a rebuttal, but I just wanted to clarify. Number one, I'm not a lawyer.
If you want to clarify anything, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
My lawyer is a lawyer, so, you know...
I have nothing against lawyers, but I don't happen to be one, nor do I work for Husky Energy. I had the opportunity. I worked 29 years for Mohawk Oil, but when Husky bought them, I left. So I'm representing a private landowner. It has nothing to do with Husky Energy or the oil company. It's just I'm working for this private individual.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. Any other speakers to this item? Second time, any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this public hearing item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Now, as I spoke before, we'll go through the other three items, and then we'll take a short break, a couple of minutes, and it will be a... The council meeting will start, and this becomes item number, really the second action item on the council agenda.
Item 2 is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 3410 Roxton Avenue from RS-2 Single Family Suburban Residential to RS-7 Small Village Single Family Residential and RTM-1 Street Oriented Village Home Residential, bylaw number 4410, 2013.
Good evening again. The site is located on the south side of Roxton Avenue and north side of Darwin, between Coast, Meridian and Toronto Street. The site is, northern half of the site is designated Street Oriented Village under the city's official community plan, and the southern half of the site is designated Small Village Single Family. Zoning on the site and to the north, east and west, is RS-2 One Family Suburban Residential. Zoning to the south is RS-7 Small Village Single Family Residential. The site currently has a single detached dwelling. The applicant is rezoning the site in conformance with the OCP designations to RTM-1 Street Oriented Village Home and RS-7 Small Village Single Residential to facilitate development of eight Street Oriented Village Homes and six Small Village Single Family lots. Staff are recommending second and third reading to rezoning by law number 4410.
Excuse me.
Counselor Essenson.
Thank you, Erica. I just want to make a point that this is all complying with the existing zoning, and the town housing that's being proposed here is going to continue out towards Coast Meridian?
That is correct. Go back to the OCP land use designation map. That is the intent, and in its conformance with that land use designation.
It is.
That zoning is. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Reverend... Oops, wait a minute. Mr. Farstad from Arlington Group, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mayor Stewart and Members of Council. My name is Graham Farstad, representing the applicant. We're located at 1030 470 Granville Street in Vancouver. The architect is also here if there are particular comments or concerns about the design. I was just going to speak about the parking in particular, as that was an area that, in my consultations with neighbors, indicated some degree of concern in making sure that there was an adequate amount of parking. The proposal would be to construct a half-road to complete Darwin on the north side, and lane construction and a temporary hammerhead to provide access for the development. The two zones, RS-7 and RTM-1, are mirror image of what is on the following public hearing. And in my discussions with residents, I found a very high level of support for the Lower High Creek Plan. There was a concern about the access from Roxton, and right now, as you come out of Roxton, the turning movements are difficult, because you have to nose right in before, into Coast Meridian in order to be able to see the traffic. So the plan calls for that being closed off, and this particular proposal will be constructing part of the turnaround for the Roxton cul-de-sac, and then constructing Roxton east to Toronto Street. So that would certainly alleviate that particular concern. And with respect to the two zones, the RS-7, that calls for three parking spaces if the residents have a secondary suite, and that is allowed under the zoning. We have an opportunity, because of the depths of the lots being much larger than typical, 34.5 meters, there's actually an opportunity to create as many as five parking spaces on the RS-7 lots, two in an enclosed garage, and two by locating the garage away from the lane, sufficient distance for visitors to park behind the garage. And there will also be a separate parking space, a surface parking space to the left, separate from the garage and any other access, for a secondary suite. So there's ample opportunity to go well beyond the bylaw to accommodate parking. The RTM-1 zone doesn't allow suites, and that would allow for, we're proposing one enclosed parking space and one surface parking space. There's also an opportunity there between the garage and the lane for temporary visitor parking as well. So we feel that that particular concern that we picked up with the question of parking, because part of the area is developed and part isn't, and this probably is more pronounced for the following hearing, but certainly, we wanted to more than accommodate the parking that's required by the bylaw to alleviate any concerns that residents may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it for our speakers list. Any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Doug Kostick. I live on 3417 Roxton Avenue, so just adjacent to the property. The two properties in the middle will be developed. That's what the plan calls for. Right now, we're dealing with 3410, okay? So I live across the street and then to the right, okay? Now, I just have a question to ask. Because the properties that are going to be developed are right in the middle of the street, there's six sacred properties, and the 3410 and 3411 are in the middle of the street, there will be back lanes. Now, these back lanes will be dead end, because the properties are in the middle of the street. So how will that work? Because I know they're very narrow. I've seen the other back lanes around us, they're very narrow, and none of them are dead end. There's always a way to get out. So I'm just wondering, because these properties are in the middle of the street, how will that be addressed? Okay, there's a picture there.
Yeah, that was anticipated, I gather.
Okay, but it is still dead end, because 33, the other one is...
Mr. Alaweva.
Yes, your worship. There is, because they are the middle, the applicant or the speaker is correct, there's going to be a lane, the permanent lanes are being shown. This, you can see it on the screen. The lane comes down from Roxton and heads east. There is a turnaround proposed between the last two lots, so that someone could turn around in there. It's essentially a hammerhead turnaround. That'll be through a right-of-way that would be essentially discharged when the lane is ultimately built out to Toronto by the site next to the east. So in the interim, there's going to be a turnaround provided, and ultimately, it will be connected to Toronto.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, that explains it.
Okay. Good. And you may have an interest in the next item. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renette Cruz. I am the owner of 3398 Darwin Avenue. So the proposed sites are literally right in front of me, directly across the street. My biggest concern is, obviously with a growing young family, it has been an established street, property-wise and whatnot. It was already a challenge as they were building, Morningstar, when they were building the development, to finish the street with a lot of, obviously, noise, construction, dirt, debris. My concern is, is number one, I'd like to know when they would be proposing to start the building or the development. And then also, for homeowners, a lot of us, a lot of the building that Morningstar did, many of the bedrooms are on the front of the property. So if you were to come onto the street, I mean, it's literally maybe 10 feet across where they're going to start tearing down the trees and whatnot. How they're going to manage and control debris, construction noise, obviously, through the development of this project? Thank you.
Okay. The applicant may want to address that at some point. Yeah, I gather you don't have any concerns about the development, but rather about the construction process. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Yes.
Hi. Excuse me. Good evening, Honorable Mayors and Counselors. My name is Michael Ma, and my family owns the lot diagonally adjacent to the one that is being proposed right now, and next to the one that is being up for bylaw hearing after this one. So this is Lot 46. Address is 3389 Roxton Street. I live on 3233 East 62nd Avenue. This afternoon, I sent in a letter addressing my concerns, and I'm here just to reiterate this. Basically, we have no objections against the development, because we understand this is part of the OCP dedication. But what we're concerned about is that if this proposed, the zoning hearing's being granted by the council, part of the attachments, that's naming this attachment number three, the lay of the lots, will be implicitly adopted by the council, and that's what we have the concern about. We tried to talk to the owners across from us, and also call in to the developers and the architect. So far, we haven't gotten any feedback from them. So so far, like, we're only about, there's only about six neighbors or six owners in this block, and I feel that whatever they do, the middle two lots, will have a significant impact to the properties, to the east and the west of it, and especially the one to the west of it. That's where we are. So right now, I think that at least the four owners on the west side has interest to develop, right? It's just that we haven't had a chance to get together to talk and to understand how maybe we can share ideas and then make it really work for everybody. I noticed that, like, on one of the attachment number five, that's the one that shows all the color maps, if we can go to that? It shows where Watkins Creek Runnings along and how to cross Roxton Street, right? And if I compare this to what was being proposed by the city to have a green street It shows where Watkins Creek runnings along, and how to cross Roxton Street, right? And if I compare this to what was being proposed by the city to have a green street, I think they have integral parts to play together, right? But I don't think anybody has really thinks about it in depth, other than that developers, they might want to just develop the land and then create a cul-de-sac where the middle of the two is, just to get some access for our properties in the future. But I'm thinking is that if, if we can go back to attachment number three... Sorry, the one that shows the lot layout. Yeah. If we are to, like, we were talking to the planning departments, and they said that whatever developments, we can follow the same as what's being proposed by the developers right now. So if that's the case, what we don't understand is, for example, the RTM1, that's a small lot fronting on Roxton Street. If we're to continue the same development lot layout, I don't understand how we would get any front-street exposure, other than the green space, the green walkway. So one question's been raised by the architect is the parking. Now, those are the 6.1 meters width lots, so roughly about 18 feet, the width of a car. So if everybody decides to park on the street, does it mean that the owners of those that's being developed right now has a first priority over the street parkings, then one west to that is? So that's all the questions that we're concerned about. We have no objections again against the development. And I think, and another thing that I was concerned about is that if we were able to talk and discuss about this, I noticed that, like, the width of the lots have not been consistent, because some of them, just to make it fit into the last lot. If there is some consultation between neighbors, we may be able to exchange land so that you can maybe squeeze in one more lot? I'm not sure, because it's all been dictated by the boundaries of how Watkins Creeks run. So if there's more time, and we don't mind paying for the study, but we should be able to first find out how, what the boundary, where the creek runs, where it's buildable, where it's not buildable, and maybe by then, we can start layout the lots based on that constraint. So this is all my say, and I thank you for this.
Okay. I think I understand it. I think, if you wait right here for a moment, Mr. McIntyre may have an answer to part of it, or at least a response.
Yes, thank you, Worship. And may I just offer a few comments before I hand off to Raul, because he's dealt more directly with this particular application and some of the thoughts around it. And Raul, as the city's approving officer, can also speak more knowledgeably about the subdivision layout. But any some interesting comments from the gentleman, and instantly, we can appreciate that concern and those questions. They own the properties to the west, and what this layout showing here suggests a potential layout for the neighboring lands, so obviously, there is some concern in that regard. Just a couple of comments. The green area along Watkins Creek that's been identified to this point, I would just remind council, that was based on the Lower Hyde Creek neighborhood plan, I believe. So that's going back some years ago. It's to identify generally, conceptually, where that SPIA, that repairing area, would be. It would then be up to the applicant at the time of rezoning or subdivision to go through the whole repairing areas regulation assessment to more precisely define the SPIA in that area. So it's, that hasn't been absolutely nailed down, but it's there for information and for reference. Now, how the development of that property can be accommodated, I think Raul can speak to that, because there is some flexibility at this point. What's before council tonight for both this application and the next item on the public hearing is dealing with those properties alone, is looking at giving some sense to the lands beyond, but it's not sort of setting the cast for those other lands. But maybe Raul can comment on that.
Yes, Your Worship. The, so the layouts proposed, and I'm alluding to this particular one, same comments will hold for the one after this one, although obviously, it's not before us. But the layout that's shown by the applicant does conform to the overall land use designations in the official community plan. So what we look for is to ensure that the application, number one, follows the land use designation. Secondly, that it does not preempt the adjoining property owners from developing in accordance with the land use designations, and this clearly passes the test. In this case, speaking on the property to the north, which we'll be talking about, which is referencing the owner of the property, I guess, that the speaker that was just up here, you'll see that the lane that's being dedicated is entirely at the cost of the current developer. So they are making some concessions that would essentially provide some benefit to the property owner. As Mr. McIntyre just mentioned, as long as the application does not preempt the owner from proceeding with the subdivision based on the land use designations, which require a lane in this case, so that's why we've dotted in the lane, because both the RS7 and RTM1 require lane access. So that's necessary for us to make sure we understand clearly. Then this particular property owner would have to do, like any other property owners, undertake the consultation, or, sorry, the holding, putting together a group of consultants, including reviewing the SPIA, looking at the riparian setbacks, determining what developable land there might be on that site. We would not envision any lot sharing being required. We only look at that if it's fundamentally necessary when we look at the layouts. In this case, this particular developer had the right number of lots, met the bylaw, there is no major surplus of property, and he achieves all of his road dedications and lane dedications. Therefore, we would not look for lot sharing as a fundamental component. So we did look at these elements, concluded that the layout would not preempt either the development to the east or west from proceeding through the subdivision development process, and on this basis, we would feel it's appropriate. We have looked at the ultimate development opportunity for properties right next to Coast Meridian, to the west of these sites, as possibly fronting on Roxton as a green street. And it's an opportunity that we feel we would explore with these property owners as a possible scenario. There is some land, we could either extend the road a little bit further if we need to, or close some properties if we need to. But either way, we'd look at those developments as an opportunity because of the location of that creek, and we'd be working with the consultants of those property owners when they come forward and they're ready to develop.
Thank you. Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. And specifically on that question, I think, so is that what the dotted lines, possible future lot lines, just the left of the words Roxton Ave, appears to show Roxton Avenue narrowing to the width of the lane? Is that an indicate, that's the indication that this is a possible future green street?
Yes, the indication is that, because this developer is actually going to be building Roxton out to Toronto, because we want to make sure that the network is completed, including across, at least the pavement, he will be building across properties to the east. So we'll be closing the access out to Coast Meridian. What we want to do is actually have a pedestrian walkway connection between Coast Meridian and this development. But the thinking is that that walkway could be on a green street. So it could essentially be a larger area where the road allowance can be utilized as an informal and public green space, or formal green space. We'd have to look at the dimensions of the properties, how they could work, and we'd look at those opportunities when the developers are ready. But it would be a public connection through there.
So when Mr. Ma was talking about access to his potential properties at 3389, and parking and everything like that, the access would be through, along the lane that's being created, that would be created if, dealing with the next property, directly to the east of his property, and also bisecting it across the middle there as well. That would be all the access. And obviously, we're getting way ahead of ourselves when we talk about what sort of parking there would be connected to a green street, but that's another big issue. But, okay, I understand it now. Thank you.
Okay. And the question before us tonight isn't the lot lines.
Yeah.
It's the zoning, and the lot lines may well, and in fact, probably possibly will change, after consultation with adjacent neighbors and all of those sorts of things. But this shows how it is technically feasible. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
Yes, it's me again, Michael Ma. And I understand, like I said, right now, the proposal being up for hearing is the rezoning, right? But if the way that is being perceived, chances are that will be the way that the architect and the developer will present it to the next round of hearing, and that's where, again, that's where we have concerns about. Now, we're talking about a green street just in front of our property, just before the cul-de-sac we proposed? So if we allow the way it is now, unless there is already an answer for us that says, okay, that street, when you're fronting on Roxton, you'll be able to at least divide the way that's proposed? Or else, we're being boxed in for this kind of development the way it is, because the city could have said, okay, the main access for the later on is through Toronto Street. And by the way, Toronto Street doesn't go through right now. So any developments proposed by the developer now has to go through Coast Meridian entering the site. And if nobody develops, I mean, then chances are, we're probably left with the traffic, not a green street, but more traffic, and then more issue with parking.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Doug Kostic, in Level 3417 Roxton Avenue.
You really have to wait, you can't speak the second time until everyone's spoken the first time, but you're up to the microphone, go ahead.
Okay. No, I've lived there for 33 years on Roxton Street.
Yep.
And now, with, once they widened the Coast Meridian Street a few years ago, they actually put in a curve. See, that diagram is not really correct. Coast Meridian actually has a curve now, and it's very difficult for us to get out of Roxton, because we have people driving up very quickly uphill, you know, trying to get speed to get up the hill, and people going downhill are going very fast. And because there's a curve, we cannot see the cars until they're right almost at our corner when we're trying to get out. So I understand why you're going to close that, and I knew that even years ago. My question is, will this green street be built in conjunction with this development and this rezoning, or will that come at a later date when the rest of the street is developed?
This property owner doesn't own the property related to the green street, and so it's not part of this approval.
Okay, so it'll be at a later date when the rest of the street is developed, then?
Mr. Aloueva.
Your Worship, yeah. The plan is to close Roxton and build the road, at least the pavement portion of the road out to Toronto.
Yeah.
So that would be the access for this neighborhood. The closure, however, will not result in any green street being constructed. That would be part of a discussion around the development of the properties to the north and south, or either one of that green street. At that point, we can determine the future of that road allowance in conjunction with those developments.
Okay, so Roxton will stay the way it is right now, even with these two developments? There won't be any changes yet?
No, except that it will be closed to traffic. It probably would still allow pedestrian access, but it will be closed to traffic.
Okay, so it will be closed on Roxton, Coast Meridian?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers to this item who haven't spoken already once? Any other speakers to this item? Okay. Any other speakers to this item, including those that have already spoken? Mr. Farstad, I think, wants to clear up some question of something. Please step forward.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's one question about the timing of development. The applicant would like to move forward as soon as possible for construction. With respect to the, what this particular applicant will be doing in regard to adjacent properties, I just want to mention four particular items that will be undertaken by the applicant, some of which have been mentioned by others. But the first would be construction on the cul-de-sac for Roxton to make it possible and for the area to the west to be closed off to traffic. He would also be constructing Roxton east to Toronto, and from Roxton north along Toronto to Giselson, that is already constructed. At a later date, others would be building the extension of Toronto south to Darwin. So that will complete the ability to circulate around the area. The third factor is that my client will be building the lane access, which is the subject of the following hearing, along to the north. So that will improve access for the adjacent property. So that will certainly not impair in any way, shape, or form. And the fourth factor is the fact that the RTM1 zone allows a maximum of eight attached dwellings in a unit. So there are eight proposed on the subject property along the south side of Roxton, and the same applies on the north side. So they could not add more additional attached row houses in any case. So I don't think there's any way the adjacent property is being impaired. In fact, it's being enhanced with respect to the development being proposed on this site.
Thank you. And to be clear, Ms. Cruz mentioned Darwin. Darwin's now a dead end half-road. Okay. And it's permanently a dead end, cul-de-sac. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Reed, for the editorial comment. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
Santa Marsden, 3420 Highland Drive. I'm not in this area, but just a question I had, having looked at a lot of these plans with you folks over the years. Roxton is going to be a green street. So even if we just look at the subdivision, you've got 13, if they all have one vehicle, you've got 13 cars, and then the other people develop on either side, you know, you have 40 cars. That's if they don't have basement suites in the RS7s, so, you know, 50 cars. What my concern is around is the laneways. I'm not sure, any laneways I've seen in Upper Hyde Creek are very narrow, and I challenge cars to pass. So if you're going to have 50, 60 cars using those lanes, accessing Toronto with Coast Meridian shut off, my only concern or question would be, are those laneways wide enough for two-way traffic, two-lane traffic? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Aloueva.
Yes, Your Worship. The roads being developed are full standard local roads, so in that regard, there are going to be full parking on those roads. And just note the roads first, because all the development on Roxton and Darwin, as well as the south part of Giselson, is all rear or lane-accessed housing. So you're going to have all that parking available. The lanes, the lanes that have been utilized in the existing green street are wider lanes. I think we have a 10-meter lane, and that's what we would be looking at, the opportunity to widen the lane in those cases, and there's very deep lots here, which is why, again, we've looked at it as an opportunity. You can see that some of the development fronting what may be a green street. And I should note, this is just a concept, we've got to look at this in more detail, but the property to the north of Roxton is going to have a limited amount of development because of the creek. Property to the south has a little bit more development, but they are less than the existing projects before council today. So we're thinking that it might be a nice combination of total density, utilizing wider lanes that might accommodate some of that parking, and perhaps use that green space in front of those properties as a second green street that we can explore.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third, you can, if you like. Yeah. You know, the next item is very similar to this one.
Yeah, so I want to speak on that one. Sorry. Yeah. I just want to comment that by the fact that what the architect said, it sounds like he already very adamant about the layout of this. So what the planner said, that that's just a put-in as a suggestion, I doubt that. The second thing that what scares me about the planner says is that, okay, when the green street is being put in, he would be doing this in conjunction with the developments that's us, when we're doing this right now. If we don't know what the guidelines of the green street is, that's really scary, because we know what the guideline for street is. Okay? It could be building, you could be asking us to plant in trees that's 40, 50, 60 feet high along the path, so we don't know. That's what's scary.
Mr. Mann, we've never asked for a 60-foot tree, I guarantee you. But I'll go to Mr. Aloueva. How option, like, I think he needs some assurance, he's used the word scary. This isn't a scary process, and I want some, well, you tell him.
Development is an interesting process, I'll say that. I wouldn't call it scary. I mean, consultants are utilized to ensure that they maximize the value of land. So we would urge you and any other owner that wants to go through that process, like this applicant, to hire consultants to determine what the land use is. The current layouts shown reflect the official community plan. They reflect the fact that lanes are necessary to serve these land uses. So while you may see that it's dotted, the reason it's dotted is because you have to have lots fronting Roxton. have lots fronting Roxton, you have to have lots fronting Giselson. That rear access is necessary. That lane is typically placed where it divides the property to meet bylaw standards. The owner is obligated, in this case, to show that concept, to protect the fact that it would set the lane in the right location for other developments like yourself, which have the same land use. So while you may feel that it's confining, it's in fact intended to show that your development is protected. Okay? In terms of how a development would occur, there is a fair amount of information provided by consultants, both environmental consultant would have to retain. And the property in front of your site, which is the city road allowance, essentially, some of it is deemed surplus because we're closing, we're going to be closing Roxton. That surplus land, the city has to utilize it in an effective way. That's our mandate. Therefore, we're going to try and see whether we can utilize it for open space. In that eventuality, we would work with your consultant to maximize your land development opportunity while at the same time having a park space. But that would be explored through a consultative process through the development application review. I would think it's something that, you know, you'd have to take a look at when you're ready to develop, and that we'd work fairly with your consultants to achieve maximum value.
Yeah. I think that I said before, we're ready to develop. I mean, but that's why that we have to work in conjunction with the developers right now to make sure that with the four lots together, we are maximizing the benefits to the city, to the people who will eventually live in it. I mean, the way it is now is that we're kind of setting the tone, setting the boundaries for what can be developed for our property and also the property across this from the street. That's what I'm saying.
There's no question. Now is a good time to talk to the adjacent property owner about working together on this. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? I guarantee you'll have another kick at the can in just a moment. Seeing none, I declare this item closed, and we'll open the item across the street.
Item three is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 3411 Roxton Avenue from RS2 Single Family Suburban Residential to RS7 Small Village Single Family Residential and RTM1 Street Oriented Village Home Residential.
Thank you. The site is located on the south side of Giselson and north side of Roxton between Coast Meridian and Toronto Street. The northern half of the site is designated Small Village Single Family under the city's OCP, and the southern half is designated Street Oriented Village. Zoning on the site into the northeast and west is RS2 One Family Suburban Residential. Zoning to the south is, or to the north is RS8. The subject site currently has a single detached residential dwelling. The applicant is rezoning the site in conformance with the official community plan designations to RTM1 Street Oriented Village Home and RS7 Small Village to facilitate eight street-oriented village homes and six small village single-family lots. Staff are recommending second and third reading to rezoning bylaw number 4411. Thank you.
Counselor Zagora.
Yeah, thank you very much. So this is identical to what has been presented in the last one, right?
I would say it's like a mirror version.
Just across the street.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And before I begin the speakers, anyone who's spoken to the item across the street and has expressed their concerns about that or expressed their support of that, and they have exactly the same comments on this one, feel free to not get up if you don't feel the need. And our first speaker on that one, who that may apply to, Mr. Farstad.
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council. I won't go over the same material, but just add some modifications that apply to this particular property. When I was meeting with residents along Giselson, several indicated a concern about parking, and I promised them that we would be able to address that as much as possible. So we've done a layout that shows how we can accommodate five parking spaces on the RS7 lots, which would be adjacent to the RS8 on the north side. So I'll just leave these with the city clerk. The, I think part of the concern on parking from the existing RS8 lots owners is that they all have driveways on their property, whereas the property that my client is proposing to develop does not, will not have driveways along Giselson. So there's limited on-street access for visitors. In this particular case, the collective road will be widened by approximately four meters, and if you discount for the hydrant along there, I think there's approximately seven additional parkings, on-street parking spaces that visitors could have. Now, that, of course, is not the bylaw requirements for my client, but he will be able to provide the three that are required by the bylaw if there's a suite, plus there's an opportunity for an additional two parking spaces on-site. In addition, for the RTM1 sites, which are not, do not allow suites, there would be two parking spaces available, plus there would be certainly temporary parking between the garage location and the lane. So I think we've more than met the requirements of the bylaw in response to the particular concerns that have been expressed. Also, would like to leave with the city clerk, four letters of support that residents, I think mainly are not here tonight, indicated that they support the development, and they're located at, three of them are on Giselson, 3397, 3400, and 3393 Giselson indicate they're very supportive of development. The only concerns that others had expressed was the concern about Roxton access of visibility, which I think has been covered, and the timing of development. And the applicant is only able to develop the property he controls. I think when adjacent property owner is interested in developing in the next year or so, but I think that the sequencing is the issue that some residents had. But it's primarily parking, and that's what we put our extra attention in.
Thank you very much for the extra attention to parking. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Adam Kirk. Support letters you talked about.
Item four is an application to amend the citywide official community plan to incorporate a new regional context statement into the city's official community plan bylaw number 4421, 2013.
Good evening, your worship and council. The bylaw that's before council today will, if adopted by council, incorporate a new regional context statement or RCS into the city's official community plan or OCP. Following tonight's public hearing, council will have the opportunity to give this bylaw second and third reading and refer it to Metro Vancouver Board. An adoption of the bylaw can occur after board acceptance of the RCS. The RCS is basically policy bridge between the city's OCP and the Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy, or RGS. And the RCS demonstrates that the city's existing OCP policy is generally consistent with the RGS. The RCS also provides an opportunity to add new features to the RGS, the Regional Growth Strategy, that will benefit Coquitlam from a land use and transit service planning perspective, including the Coquitlam Frequent Transit Development Area, or FDDA, and the Fraser Mills Local Centre. Staff have received feedback from Metro Vancouver on the RCS bylaw, and staff responses to these comments are provided in the public hearing brief, provided to council, and reflected in the staff recommendations in the associated staff report. Won't go into detail, these comments and our responses, but I can answer any questions regarding these comments and responses. Also want to note that following release of the public hearing brief late last week, we also received feedback from Port Moody, the Coquitlam First Nation, and New Westminster on Friday and earlier today, and I'll provide a brief overview of this feedback and staff responses to this feedback. So from Port Moody, we received an additional council resolution further to their June 21st, 2013 letter that stated that Port Moody encourages the city of Coquitlam to focus more effort on improving traffic flows from central and northern Coquitlam to new highway. I'm assuming that is the Transcana Highway, and that all references to the Murray-Clark Connect to be removed from their Coquitlam Strategic Transportation Plan. So our response regarding the traffic flows portion of that resolution, Coquitlam's working with Port Coquitlam on the future Lincoln and Fremont connectors, which will help to improve traffic flows from central Coquitlam, and of course, Burke Mountain to the south and the east. The completed Evergreen Line will also move large amounts of people from east to west through Port Moody without impacting traffic capacity in Port Moody. These projects have or will involve significant effort by Coquitlam, and the city is working with Port Moody and Port Coquitlam on tri-city transportation issues. Regarding the Murray-Clark connector portion of that resolution, the request to remove the Murray-Clark connector from the Strategic Transportation Plan, or the STP, is outside the scope of the bylaw. The STP is intended to be an aspirational document that's adopted by council or is endorsed by council, but is not adopted as a bylaw. And it highlights regional and local transportation improvements. Murray-Clark Connector is still in the Port Moody OCP as we speak now, although that OCP is under review. And further consultation with Port Moody is required before we consider that. So changes to the RCS bylaw are not recommended based on that. Okay, so we got feedback from Coquitlam First Nation in a letter dated today. Just some summary points here, that it cannot endorse the land use policy plans of external governments, that do not include a role for the First Nation decision-making processes. The OCP and the Regional Growth Strategy don't outline a need to consult with the First Nation. There needs to be a statement in the RCS about the need to consult with Coquitlam First Nation. And there's also an invitation for the city to discuss Coquitlam's involvement in land use decision-making processes. The staff response, we know that we have circulated a draft regional context statement and also the bylaw on two occasions to the Coquitlam First Nation, so staff referrals and then the official bylaw referrals, as per the OCP consultation requirements of the Local Government Act, LGA Section 879. The staff can also meet with Coquitlam First Nation staff on an informal, offline basis to discuss this request in a matter that's not associated with this bylaw, about their potential involvement in future OCP land use planning processes. So in this regard, changes to the RCS bylaw are not recommended. We also received feedback from New Westminster in a letter dated today stating that designation of United Boulevard west of King Edward to the Brunette River as a goods movement route into New Westminster is premature. Note that the Braid Street in New Westminster was a continuation to the west of United Boulevard is not a truck route in the New Westminster policy documents. Consideration of extending goods movement corridor along United Boulevard should be done following consultation with senior transportation agencies such as TransLink and the province and New Westminster itself. They also note that there's currently three processes underway to inform goods movement corridors in New Westminster, their own transportation plan, the regional goods strategy, and the regional transportation strategy that are both under development by TransLink. So our response, staff response, as noted in the public hearing brief and in response to metro staff comments, staff are proposing to designate United Boulevard portion west of King Edward Avenue to the Brunette River as a future goods movement route. But also, in conjunction with this, staff are also proposing to add what we call a clear intent policy to the RCS. And I'll read right out of the recommendation here. It's that the city intends to establish United Boulevard between King Edward Street and Brunette River as a key goods movement route within the city and the region, upon completing road and bridge infrastructure improvements that facilitate safe and efficient goods movement through this corridor, and will be working with New Westminster, TransLink, the province to achieve these improvements. So based on this, the proposed bylaw amendments that we've put forward today respond to these comments. Just wrapping up, in terms of next steps, council can consider second and third reading on this bylaw after the public hearing. If they give it second or third reading, it will be referred to Metro Vancouver Board, and Metro Board has 120 days to reply. If they accept the RCS by resolution, council can then consider final reading of the bylaw, and that's likely to occur in the fall of 2013. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one speaker on this item, Dr. Luigi Joleslmona. He's at 5504 Union Street in Burnaby.
Yes. Good evening, your worship and council. As a member of the TransLink Northeast Area Transit Plan Advisory Committee, along with our many corporate interests with multiple property investments in southwest Coquitlam, together with my professional commitment to next-generation transportation and land use outcomes, what's before you tonight is quite important for Coquitlam in the coming year. To open, I suggest council consider deferring this item, or at least consider deferral at fourth reading, until we understand what will happen with the TransLink referendum and the implications it has for the metro growth regional strategy. Without question, the RCS before you represents a careful balance that has generally well-served the city. This framework has contributed to achieving a livable community with the neighbors, with a few exceptions. And of course, the regional growth plan has been important as a catalyst for the Evergreen Line, which is going to help solve many of the problems in the city. However, the province's referendum on transit funding has the potential to destabilize more than just regional funding for transportation. The metro region growth strategy is founded on the principle of shaping growth. Well, should the public not support the referendum vision? It's easy to see and probable that the lack of funding will only result in serving the existing community we have out there. And what are we going to do with the real struggle coming with future population growth? We already have this challenge, and I see this on the advisory committee, that there's already a problem of service optimization that transit's gone through in this region, and that's since that's a problem of robbing Peter to pay Paul. I do not wish to suggest the referendum lacks legitimacy for engaging the public. Indeed, the public appears to have lost some confidence in TransLink and its decision-making framework. While the funding risk exists, should the referendum fail, should it gain support, we have a great opportunity to move forward and pursue some broader modal choices. Yet, we do not know the referendum question. So, excuse me, so we must be concerned with the impacts of that question, not just on transportation, but on land use. And these two items cannot be extracted from each other. I'd also observe, on the closing of this public hearing this evening, and should you not have the four-three, excuse me, ratification from metro, you wouldn't even be able to consider the referendum question, or even the result of the referendum, in your deliberations around the RCS when you do get to fourth reading. So there's some serious issues before you. Before concluding, the staff report before you generally addresses the RCS in a well-reasoned manner, except for two items. First, the comments from TransLink is that the area transit plan is the best place to deal with this issue. Well, there's considerable risk for Coquitlam here should the referendum fail. You might find yourself with having approved the RCS, metro ratification, and then the inability to move forward on the very sizable challenges we have with mobility in Coquitlam. Second, the financial assessment section in the report identifies no major cost implication. That might be true in the short term, but I have to agree with the mayor and his recent public comments that should the referendum fail, Coquitlam will be left with building more roads, dedicating land to more parking, and otherwise pursuing less than a sustainable development strategy. I would therefore suggest that the other important priorities of council, such as affordable housing, become way harder to achieve if we're dedicating more land to roads rather than homes, and the livability of the community is undermined when we have to dedicate scarce tax dollars to road construction rather than parks. As an aside on the matter from New Westminster and the North Fraser Perimeter Road, some 20 years ago, when I was Director of Transportation Planning for the Province of British Columbia, that was in the province's plans many years ago, so I'm not sure why it's an idea that we have a goods movement route on the North Fraser. In sum, Coquitlam has a great track record in moving forward its vision for a sustainable community. I'm also proud of council's commitment to achieving a great community on Burke Mountain, and we sorely and early need transit up there. Council can and should endorse the strategy in principle, but at the same time, make clear to metro, TransLink and the province, that final ratification can only occur when we see the commitment that truly- see the commitment that truly shapes development in the face of the unrelenting population growth we expect. Thank you for your attention and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. No, we're good. Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Regional context statement, any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? I declare this item and the public hearing closed. Take a couple of minutes to reschedule or reset microphones and cameras and we'll begin